I'll ask the camera, man. Do I look okay?
You look great.
Is my tie on straight?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. It is a little bit after 7:00 PM. We'll go ahead and start the regular meeting of the Buffalo Board of Aldermen for October 7th, 2013. The first thing on the agenda is Mayor's Comments, and I will begin with Mayor's Comments. Well, I have three things. I have two proclamations and something of a more serious tone that will relieve a lot of people here tonight. The first proclamation is of a rather silly nature. The second proclamation is of a very important nature. And I'll start with a silly one first. On April 20th, I was fortunate enough to meet a childhood hero of mine after a concert in Springfield, Missouri. And I have a proclamation in regard to that, that I handed that performer with a key to the city. I'll go ahead and read that proclamation. Whereas Weird Al Yankovic has been playing, recording, and entertaining for over 30 years, whereas the works of Weird Al Yankovic have enriched the lives of the citizens of Buffalo, Missouri, whereas days have been added to the lives of our citizens through humor and music, therefore be it resolved that I, Andrew Mead, Mayor of the City of Buffalo, Missouri, do hereby proclaim October 23rd, 2013 as Weird Al Yankovic Day. In testimony whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of Buffalo, Missouri this 19th day of April, 2013. I have a copy of that, and I will present that to our city clerk. Weird Al Yankovic, again, has been a childhood hero of mine, and it's one of the perks as Mayor, you get to give out keys to the city and have proclamations. And I would certainly hope that day in October, Weird Al Yankovic's birthday, will be a day that we can all be weird, happy, forget those stressful things in life, and remember to enjoy ourselves. The second proclamation I have is more unserious tone. We have been blessed in our community with a man who has dedicated a lot of his life and efforts to making Buffalo a nicer place to live. Lawrence Holt, through having wheelchair races, has enhanced our understanding of how poorly we've allowed our city to crumble. My wife and I participated in the wheelchair race, and I'm proud to say we came in second place, missing first place by a fraction of a second. And it was very enlightening to see how poor our sidewalks were. From that time forward, we were able to go out and repair some sidewalks on Maple Street and Main Street, and from that time, I've made it a goal to better our sidewalks and our infrastructure here in Buffalo. So for my second proclamation, I've written, whereas the City of Buffalo has received a transportation enhancement grant through the Missouri Department of Transportation, whereas the transportation enhancement grant shall be utilized for a walking trail within the City of Buffalo, whereas Lawrence Holt had dedicated efforts for the rehabilitation and creation of sidewalks within the City of Buffalo, therefore be it resolved that I, Andrew Mead, Mayor of the City of Buffalo, Missouri, do hereby name the aforementioned walking trail as the Lawrence Holt Memorial Trail. In testimony whereof, I appear to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of Buffalo, Missouri, this 7th day of October, 2013. Wayne Holt is here. And Wayne, I would like to give you this proclamation. In honor of your father and his efforts.
Thank you very much.
Here, I think.
He would be so happy to see everything that you guys have done. That was one of his goals for a long time, and it's just great for the family to see this happen.
Good.
Makes it great. Thank you so much.
We're proud to do something and recognize his effort.
Thank you.
The third and final thing I have for Mayor's Comments this evening is resignation. I've drafted a resignation, and I'll read it. I hereby resign the office of Mayor of the City of Buffalo, Missouri, effective at the conclusion of Mayor's Comments at the regular meeting of the Buffalo Board of Aldermen convened this 7th day of October, 2013. Recently, there has been, I guess, a difference of opinion on what direction we need to head. An ideological rift that has caused a little bit of disdain within the Board of Aldermen and our city government. And for that reason, I am resigning. It's not an easy task of government, and while I'm very proud of what we've been able to accomplish in the last couple of years, it's at that point where my participation is no longer fruitful with the city. I wish the city the best. I hope the city is able to move on and move forward, and I will offer my services, whether it be advice, information, or legwork if necessary, to our new mayor and our Alderman on request. I'm here for the city. However, my leadership will no longer be utilized from this point forward. That concludes the Mayor's Comments and concludes my tenure as your mayor, and I appreciate serving the people of Buffalo. And if I'm ever needed in the future for anything, let me know. Thank you.
On behalf of the council, thank you.
And now we go for ice cream.
As Mayor Quo Tim, I will take over the meeting. I have no comments. Very first thing, business of meeting, that is not on the agenda. Excuse me. I need a motion to accept the resignation of Andrew Mead as mayor.
I move that we accept the resignation of Andrew Mead as mayor.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? I have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion forthcoming? A call for vote.
Brandon.
Aye.
Jess.
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
Christie.
Aye.
James.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Second, under the state statutes as well as our city ordinances, we must have a, I will call a special meeting. The Board of Aldermen will elect one of its own to serve as mayor of the City of Buffalo until the election next year. At that time, someone will be elected mayor for a one-year period to serve the remaining term of Andrew's term. I set Wednesday night at 6:00 for the special call meeting for the purpose of electing a mayor of the City of Buffalo. Does anyone on the council have a conflict with that? In some sense. On the rest of the meeting. Our citizens' comments?
I've got a common question. Buffalo, City Buffalo website's down. It says citybuffalo.us. Did the government shut down, kill our website, or why happened our website? It's been down since September 27th. There's nothing except a hole that says server's not there. And I wondered if the .us behind the Buffalo, Missouri, meant that when the government shut down, they should...
I don't know.
I didn't know if the government funded our website or what. But we don't have one.
The city clerk, would you look into that, please? We will look into it.
Okay.
We'll talk, we'll talk to our webmaster.
Yeah, well, I mean, I always...
See if we figure out to do that.
Well, I was just going to go on the city website, find out for sure what time it is and what's going on. It's not there.
I didn't know anything was wrong. I posted the agenda on there, and it showed it.
It was down today.
Yeah, but I mean, for it to have been down that long, I posted the agenda on it.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been up since September 28th.
So, we will check into it.
We will check. Anyone else have a decision? Minutes and bills?
I had one direction on the minutes. There was one section in here, underwater adjustments, where Brandon made a motion and then seconded it. I think I actually made a motion.
It's a democracy.
That was all I seen. And I would move that we accept minutes and bills with that direction.
A motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
I want a second.
I have a second.
Can she second herself?
She could, but Travis is here. Do I hear any discussion regards to the minutes and bills? Jimmy, have you anything? Larry?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
The next thing on the agenda is the appointment of officers. I would suggest, since the council is going into an executive session, that when we reconvene, we vote on this particular item. Are there any objections? No objections, that will stand. Department head reports. Debbie?
I don't think I have anything to add. I don't even remember what I typed, so it's been really busy around here lately.
I understand. Getting our tax money. Building inspection. It's not here. Chief's not here. Police Department?
I've got nothing other than...
I have a question. On the reports that come from the police department. It said, and I'm just, I'm not questioning, I'm just kind of like, you know. I see here that we have five people tried to commit suicide. We had DWIs. Where did I see that? We had more DWIs over here on the other two pages than we did on the final. Is there a reason, or they just, are these three, the guy who was intoxicated, these were arrests, but not convictions?
Well, this just means that we see DWI with the one beside it, that's a citation for DWI. The other page on the back where it says DWI is a primary offense, which means these two, I think we had a total of two DWIs, but one of them got a ticket, and one of them just went with their paperwork, and they don't have to deal with it for it. They might not proceed to take it forward this time.
I would assume that after a new mayor is elected, things will be completely turned around. We don't know who else in charge will be, but the new mayor will run the departments at his discretion unless he makes different decisions. Council will, the mayor will come from one of the six. So, and I know you've had no direction. You were appointed without direction. I don't see any mayor would give you directions, so that everybody will know and every department will know where their situation is. Street water, it's not here. Tax collection report. Did you make the report? Anything on tax report?
No, it's just a report you're required to get by the law, so...
Okay. Wastewater treatment.
Okay. Unfortunately, the break from the breakdowns didn't last very long. New station number two, pump number two, dropped its impeller. And what that means is, impeller is what moves the water, and it dropped it off the end of the shaft. I've seen this happen twice in 21 years. What it did was, it, the impeller got off balance, and it took the shaft out and took the bearings out. To repair it, the pump is going to be $2,172.35. It could have been a lot worse, but...
What's a new pump worth?
About 10,000, 12,000.
Isn't that one I had trouble with before?
No, it was pump one on the other side who had trouble with it before. This is the other pump.
Is this a bid?
Yes.
Or is there more than one bidder, or is this just a work order?
That's a work order for independent electric.
As far as that is, we have to move this age. We really can't let it pile up.
Is that, is that the only thing that was wrong?
Yes.
I assume you've been doing proper maintenance, and it'd come off in, well, you can maintain the fella in a second. All right, I understand. It's a mistake. Debbie?
Yes.
Do we have the money in the fund to pay for this?
Yeah, I mean, it's the beginning of the fiscal year, so...
Then, due to the fact that I can still make motions until this time, I make a motion. I make a motion that we pay this bill, get it repaired ASAP.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, and a second, suspend $2,175 to bring it back to its glory.
Wayne?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Jess?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
This is always, this next item, it really kind of a pet peeve with me.
Water adjustments?
It sure is. You know, I...
Unless you're the one needing it adjusted, and then it would be handy.
Well, but it's still my obligation to fix my own leaks.
Right.
I mean, between the meter and my house, it is my responsibility, the landlord's. And it's not our responsibility to take care of something like this. Then why don't you come and pave my driveway? I mean, it's, we're looking at the same thing. Why not take the same amount of money? It's just, it's money, it belongs to the city. If you can't take care of your own property, I don't believe it's the city's responsibility. Maybe we've done this by ordinance, and we probably have. Debbie will tell me in a minute. Debbie, is, is the water adjustments done by ordinance?
No. It's just been a policy of the board to adjust half of the, of what's considered to be the leak when somebody fixes their leak in a timely fashion, sorry.
I'm not going to make a motion today, but I think it's something the council should consider after the new mayor takes over. I just think it's, you know, it's four, five, $6,000 a year.
Is this, is this something that costs the city money when water goes through like that?
Well, I mean, just the water that's pumped through the system, and that's why we only adjust for half of it. They still have to pay. I mean, it started, I don't know, about 16 or 17 years ago, the city decided to split the difference.
It is a cost because we lose the revenue. I mean, Wayne's had the same problem.
I had a gal come talk to me, and she's a single mom, and she didn't realize her toilet was running until she got her water bill, and it was extremely, I mean, large, and so that kind of tipped her office to the problem, so I can see if, you know, Brandon might know that he has a leak right away and fix it, and no problem, but not everybody does realize right away that they have a leak until they get that large water bill, and then they're kind of shocked.
I said, this is a discussion.
As far as that amount.
And like I said, I think it's something that we should think about, because we're talking perhaps about $5,000. We just, we just went to the, to the mat with the budget in all departments to try to save money. So, this is, this is a pretty big deal, but I need a motion to pay the water adjustments.
We accept the water adjustments.
A second.
A motion that's been made to accept the water adjustments. Do I hear a second?
A second.
A second, I didn't hear you say. Any comment, discussion? Would you please call it?
Jess?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Wayne?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
The next agenda is old business, and the first thing on the agenda is the...
Jess, sorry, do you want to get, see if Eric has our ideas, to see if he wants to get his monthly report?
Yeah. Everybody here on the council can read, unless you have something to say.
This was asking.
Do you have something to say to the council?
Fire station's being painted. Come on, we'll get it here.
That's right.
Salt on the wood.
You know, it's kind of, this is always...
Can you get it in the back there?
For the, for the people who run the administration or mayor departments, they come in, write us reports, and then read them to us. But I can understand, you know, if you come to a meeting, and I ask you, Andrew, do you have any problems? Tell me the problems. I don't care how, you've told me how many traffic tickets you've issued, that's here. But if you've got any separate problems, then those things should be discussed. You know, it's like Gus trying to tell me that we did so many million gallons of sewage, I don't really care, you know? Just that it got his handled. So, that's, I do, and I apologize, Brandon, for not asking when he come in. Old business.
All right.
All right. New business?
No, well, I always go ahead and say, I'm not really good at this program. We have two new businesses?
Three.
Three.
Buffalo Hardware?
Three.
Dallas County Marketing and Howdy Guys Cleaning Service.
Howdy Guys.
I've moved that we accept all three business losses.
Say it.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the rule.
Wayne?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
Brandon?
Aye.
Christie?
Aye.
Jess?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye.
Now to the old business. And the first business of the old business is the municipal court system that we talked I really think in my own mind that if the city is really going to progress, we really need our own court system. We need to have a system whereby we can enforce our ordinances within reasonable length of time. The other thing is, is our cost is minor. Our cost for attorney would be set a couple hours a month instead of never knowing for sure how long it should have been, am I right?
I'd be happy to talk to the board about that. I mean, I can give you good facts.
Okay. And I think we need somebody else to speak. So, would you care to address the matter?
Sure, absolutely. Today was my city municipal court day. I started at 10:00, we went until noon, and we finished at 2:00. So, that was approximately three, three and a half hours today. That would be, barring any sort of unusual situation, that would be the three and a half, four hours that I spend in court on a monthly basis. That's obviously not taken into account whenever tickets and informations come in for me to review and file, contacting, or defendant's attorneys contacting me, or defendants contacting me, which I suspect accounts for another couple of hours every month, and corresponding communicating, that sort of thing. I suspect, on average, I'm spending somewhere around 10 hours a month from municipal court services. And, you know, you can look, and I would have to go through any of the previous bills or any bill in the future about, you know, I try and detail it out, so you can see through the descriptions of what I'm spending that time on. I don't know, because I've never acted as city attorney in a city that has their own municipal court system, about if that would provide any cost savings, because in the associate circuit here in Buffalo, they dedicate Mondays for city court. The first Monday of the month is city court. It isn't state court, it isn't probate, it isn't family law. And so, I mean, they, they have been accommodating in that regard, because I know whenever Ted Floss came and talked, he was talking about situations where I might have to be sitting waiting, not doing city business, and that is not the case. But I simply don't know if that would increase efficiencies or not. Obviously, that's a decision that you all, you know, have to make a decision about. If I can answer questions about specifics, about what's happening now, I'd be happy to do that.
Travis, are there a lot of city ordinance tickets that come through court up there? Or is that kind of just handled outside of the court, like...
Lead ordinance.
They're all, they're all city ordinance.
Well, I'm talking about these, the lead ordinances and the...
If, and I mean, I know that this has been a kind of a touchy subject, but I mean, if those were being investigated and written, they would be going through the system. There aren't a lot written currently, and so they're not going through, but they would be going through that system.
What if we tried it? I mean, if we tried it for a year, and it didn't work, we could do away with it. Am I right?
You can't. I mean, there'd obviously be the transition to...
There would be a transition to in front. I think if it's something that will better the town, and I'm not wanting, I'm not wanting speed trap tickets, that's not what we're trying to put this in for, we're trying to put this in, or my opinion is, to expedite our ordinances, maybe write a few more lawn tickets, and generally have a little ribbon added to it, because it would be all the way around. I would like to try it. This is my opinion, and we're going to have some discussion. I'd like to try it for a year, look at it, see if it suits us. If it doesn't, the biggest part of this, council's still going to be here in a year, and they can throw it out. I mean, it's not permanent. But I think for, for 15 years, and all these years, we've never tried it. I think it's something we need more to see if it wouldn't benefit us, to help clear town up, make our town a little bit more aggressive. And like I said, we're not looking for kangaroo courts, and we're not looking for speed traps, because that would create a lot of people in the road. And Jeremy knows, we've talked about it, he's not, he's not in favor of the speed traps. We're not looking for that, because, you know, Fairbro had a straight, they had a deal whereby they tried it, and they got their hands faint because that, that longs the highway department, so they had to put their officers out. But there's a lot of cities around with, and some of them seem to be happy with it, some of them not. I just really, in my opinion, this is my opinion only, that we should try it one year. What's the discussion? Wayne, you tell me, your, your opinion. You're a been prosecuted attorney, you're, you're still a practicing attorney.
I've got mixed emotions, you know. You know, if you do it right, you're going to have to pay for the city court. And, you know, I suppose that it wouldn't be the end of the world to try it. I've always been quasi opposed to it. I thought Randy made a good presentation on that issue, but I, you know, if I'm leaning, I would lean against it, but that doesn't mean, you know, I, I don't have an extra idea or any idea of it. Just we've got, we've got the book system. and under the present test, and I, I don't know that we have it, and on the exact number of tickets that come in, what the revenue would be, and it can't be done for quote revenue for a few days. But, you know, on, on fair, just to, to look at it and see financially, how the two stack up, and I would think it might be some work, but, you know, I'd kind of like to see that. You know, what share of the court costs and/or fines, we're receiving revenue now, and what we've received under the new system. Now, I'm not volunteering to do that analysis, but it would help me decide, I think. Because you've still got to preside it, and are you going to, are you gonna make a quote quasi courtroom? Or are you just gonna operate, you know, with tables like they are? If it's, you know, a big thing, maybe probably Travis, and if they're accommodating, I'm doing it all, receiving cases where he's not waiting. I can't imagine that the city officers have to be there. I know Chief Arts has, he has said a lot of times, the officers have to wait there for a long time. Well, that doesn't make any sense, because they, they're not there. At the initial plea, you plead guilty or not guilty, only if they ask for a trial, does the officer come in.
And that's, that's considered.
And so, I don't, I, I mean, I, I never did really understand that or, or just, it's hard to know. And there's more work to it than you think, you know? You've got the computer system and getting it set up. I don't, now, truly, I don't have a huge act, either way, I probably don't have enough information without looking at a rundown of the finances to go one way or the other.
Could we table it and get that information together first, so that we can-
I have a city clerk, mother, we can, uh, figure as much of that information as we can from the county court. Unless you look at it at the next meeting, if it don't need a jury. Let's, like Wayne says, look at the dollars and cents, let's see. Two things, it's dollars and cents, and it's convenience. Travis, we've got, Travis is, is kind of immaterial. It's more than we do it for the people, to give them a court system that they can live with, and that their tickets can be paid, and not a lot of undue burden on them. Because as I said, it's a nightmare to put in a couple hours and exactly. So, let's look at it, the month will do that, we will, we'll ask the council to table this, and fill the next regular meeting, and we'll try to have some dollars and cents and look at it. Would you please also check and get Randy's cost to the city for his expertise to be the judge and clerk to get his system?
You might find out too, if we get a hundred percent of the cost from city court, and I assume we do, and probably get nothing in the associate court. So, the difference would be, and I, I guess, the fines do come back to the city, you don't take the home savings.
And the additional expenses would be the judge and clerk.
That, that figure was about fifteen thousand dollars last year that we received. Generate more, speaking of expenses. But stuff we'll get, and somewhere along the way, we want, we don't want to do it, we don't, we don't do it if it's not a problem. If there's anybody that's not unhappy, if they are unhappy. So, we're considering that all, at the next meeting. Something here, and I had no idea, old business, Kiwanis Old Park, does somebody tell me what that means?
Is that the school?
No, I don't think so.
Park tagline.
Wasn't supposed to be here.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, there was supposed to be somebody here, so if there's not, I would just move on.
Okay.
Is it, well-
No, somebody called and they wanted to talk to you guys about something, and I thought they were gonna have somebody here. From the Kiwanis.
Since it's the seventh of October and Halloween's around the corner, don't we normally give them permission to use their-
It's not about that, they're wanting to do something to the shelter.
Oh, something else.
Yeah, but we don't really know any details, because they're supposed to be here.
They have to come again. Locust Street completion, I don't know exactly what we're on here. I'm thinking that, and this is something that should be done. We can buy coal mix from Lemon. And the street department can lay it, and there's three places they need to lay coal mix in Buffalo. They need to finish up Locust Street, where we didn't finish it. We're not talking about putting whistles down, we're talking about this fixing the street.
Right, the old patch that-
Right, we need to fix Locust and Ramsey Street, where we dug up here about thirty days ago. We, it's still white rock, it needs to be asphalted back, and it can be done with coal mix. There's two places in town that is really ugly. And as you come into town on Maple Street, across what I'm gonna call Navy's U. Carlock, in front of that house, it's all grown up with grass, from the curb to the street. Dig it out, asphalt it, make it look nice, get the grass all good. Those three places, but I think we just need to go ahead and ask the street department, and authorize them to get the coal mix, know how much it is, does anybody know? I talked to Mr. Sharp about that, and he said they fought two loads, I think it's over a thousand dollars a load, they do that out there. All the way, that's out there on Locust. Right, and then you can figure it out, that's a couple of- And he said it's funny to loan us the equipment if we needed anything to do. To roll it? Yes. That's all. Will they loan us a dump truck to go get it? Well, we need to look at it, we need to get what they-
I think they would. We've got Prince Lane, oh, W. dollars. Prince Lane, oh, W. dollars. Prince Lane.
So, this, so we need to authorize the street department, and let's, it'll be a transportation fund expense. And it needs to get done, and we don't need to wait till it's winter time. We need to get this done while it's still working.
I would move that we authorize them to complete that Locust Street section.
For what, for amount, or just fix it? It can't cost-
Mr. Sharp told me, he figured for this out here, about forty-five hundred would do it all.
Would do it all?
What he thought.
Well, let's get-
Have the material on it.
Okay, well, we've got our own way, it's there, let's fix it. Let's, let's get that thing looking right. We spent a lot of money to get Locust Street fixed, and let's not leave it to go through all winter and make a mud hole out of it, and really look, make Wayne look bad, and we don't want to do that.
I will second Chris's motion to spend up to five thousand dollars.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
I have a question. And I, I was pretty sure, and it doesn't matter to me, I guess, really, I was pretty sure that the, we were initially talking about basically redoing it. And I, that's, that's what I was curious about.
Hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Hundred and thirty-two.
Hundred and thirty-two.
I, I, I just, I'm not saying we need to do that, I'm just asking, that's what we discussed.
One little patch where, you know how they grow, and they widen the street, and then they need to replace this one patch down that Prince Street that kind of shoots off.
I think, in my opinion, until we are in good, solid financial situation, that we patch for a while.
Yes, okay.
I mean, at the time, a year from now, six months from now, to relook at it, let's get it fixed now. Let's lay it out there all summer long. Wayne's most of two tires asked me to fix it, why?
I can't do that.
I have a discussion, uh, I have that, thank you. Jim, you have anything? Larry? No other comments? I have a motion and a second, we could do a cold one.
Jess?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Brandon?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
New business, MSU?
They had to postpone.
Before we go into closed session, do I have any other citizens' comments?
On your water adjustments? You know, my mother was a city collector back in the fifty-sixes. Uh, remember Noel Shaw?
Yes.
She had your opinion. But the council, everybody, same thing when Ray Patterson was on the council, the mayor, and Jim Davis. This water adjustment was big jobs on each merit. But some people definitely could not pay the astronomical amount that was there, even though they knew it was their fault. Uh, some people did something else, and I was walking up. And on the municipal court, she said we've never had before. In early seventies-
I was judged, so I'll, I'll take that back. We did have a municipal court.
Dorothy Smith here was a county prosecutor.
She was, I was.
And she sucked my, she sucked me with a very thick tongue.
I might not have stripped for five times in one day for the same expense, but that, it really wasn't. We took care of parking tickets.
Mine was parking.
And Dorothy, she-
I think at that time, the judge did not have to be a lawyer.
No, he did not have to be, because-
Or she.
She wasn't, and I wasn't. I mean, I showed that, I know all of them.
I knew the ones that broke.
Yeah, yeah, and I apologize, because we've, but we've never had an official judge.
Is it gonna be cost effective for, they're gonna have to set the fines behind it.
That's what we're gonna have to look at, to see the cost, and get back with Randy on the fines.
Because the state legislature's looking into lowering court costs, and say why, because they're getting too high.
But the cost in Fairbro is five times the cost of Dallas. Yeah, speeding ticket in, in Fairbro will cost you about two hundred and fifty dollars. Let's go.
If you have a, you know, your yard gets taller, will you have time to get the yard taken care of if, before you have to go?
Well, we're not looking for a kangaroo system. We're looking for a court system that will help us clean up our town.
Yeah, you know, there's, in the spring, there's what they call a peater.
I understand, your yard's not-
It gets up real tall, and if you can't get your yard in two or three weeks, you're breaking the law.
That's right.
Do you get time to get that cut down before you go?
I mow five acres, and I keep my yard, I have time enough to do it.
Don't they first sit out of that as?
Yes, we turn out another certain-
It's a long time, I've got layers and, gee, and what was it, I got out of a hospital, and I couldn't get it done.
There are always situations in every situation.
You know what the biggest complaint is about the court costs? Why do I have to pay court costs? I didn't get a court. Well, you'll hear that, sure, whoever's in the party will hear that. I know at one time, if you paid a speeding ticket ahead of time, you didn't have to pay court costs. Well, it's been that way as long as I can remember.
Right.
You paid the court costs irrespectively.
Irrespectively, you paid it.
Seems never happened.
So, I move that we go into closed session.
I have a little-
Yeah, another country, yeah.
Sorry, go ahead. What are we gonna do about the same?
We do not know at this present time. Give us a little time, we would like to, uh, the council would really like to sit down and weigh the problem and see what we're gonna do. You know, we're, uh-
Is this gonna be a closed meeting?
Probably not, it's, if it doesn't involve personnel, they are not closed meetings. If they involve personnel, they go closed. We just kind of need to know, nobody really knows what's going on, where we're at. Give the council, give these, give these folks time to analyze what we've gotta do, how we're gonna clean it, how we're gonna feed it, how we're gonna fund it, those are the things that we're trying to get down. I will assume that at the next meeting, Christie's very well involved with it, I'm not putting that on her shoulders, I'm saying that we're looking for, for help on how we're gonna decide. Give us some time, we will get something done. It's, it's here, we've had a resignation, our council, for the present time, will have to be reorganized. At that time, and at the next meeting, whoever is the mayor after Wednesday, will get some information. And the council, you're not avoiding the thing, you just kind of got out of hand on this.
Do you have any immediate concerns we need to discuss right now?
Yes, I do, thank you.
One is there's no heat there.
There you go.
There's no heat, we have no heat.
What, have propane heaters working?
Um, there is one propane heater there, I'm not sure if it works, and there's two-
We bought three or four nooks in there last year.
I don't know, I started the last weekend in December. We have one propane heater there, and we have two barn heaters, little things, and one runs continuous, and the other one's off and on. I wasn't there.
What, barn heater trip breakers, they used to?
Yes, and last year when I was leaving, one of them started a fire as I was walking out the door, and the burn marks were still on the cement.
What did we do last year, I guess, is my question.
I don't know, because I cannot help, all I know is that we had little barn heaters and one oil heater there. The barn heaters do not work, we have two buildings that need heat.
We had some big overhead, the ones that stood up down there last year, heaters.
They must have been in there before the last weekend of December, because I've been there since December and-
It was in there last winter. When'd it get?
From January first.
Sorry, I don't remember.
January first, I've been there, since January first, I got my heater set, and there's never been any heaters in there other than two barn, barn heaters, and those are temporary, those are made to warm a room for two to three hours.
Can we authorize them possibly, Debbie, I know that you are busy, but maybe if she can assess direct needs right now, that we can give her some authority to meet those needs?
Alls I'm asking for is, Sam's, they're a hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents without tax, I've got pictures of them, I went there today. Temporary, remind me free, a heat, a thousand square feet, but if I could just get two of them, I will buy them, I can be paid back within ninety days.
Well, we need the twenty-eighth of October. And do you think that you need them before October twenty-eighth?
No, I don't, as long as we can get something, you know, soon.
We won't have a decision made, and I want, we want everybody's input. I'm gonna ask Larry if he'll look, and, and Christie if she'll look, and see what the needs are out there as, as this program goes. And come to the council, and bring what you suggest, and bring your bills, and let's, go ahead and physically look at it, and then come back and decide, I mean-
I could go on quite a, I would like to be at this meeting, so I can have, I think I have that input.
Twenty-eighth is an open meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a regular meeting, and we're not, we're not here to hide it, I mean, we, but we need, we're not, we don't run, run out of shelters ourselves, we have to ask for help.
We had a website to play that.
You know, so-
Did you have any more other immediate concerns?
That's, that's the most important, I think, right now.
We're good on food, we're good on cat litter, we're good on-
It's okay to go get a bag of food, um, cat litter, we have enough to keep us going for a couple weeks, if not, I will go get it.
Have, I've got a quick question, I'm sorry, Jess, have there been any calls out to the-
Yes, there is, um, I took in a lab that was hit by a car that was sent to us, I guess these are the youth department, which is fine. Um, and I went ahead and picked up a cat, um, Country View Apartments. It was in the stairwell at City Labs. Um, there's also another employee, young woman, for a time.
Yeah.
She doesn't know, um, we've had a lot of phone calls, majority of them are out in the country, and people that have pets, that just don't want them anymore, or let their cats have one litter after another, and expect the pound to take them in, and that's not, that's not fair.
No, did we?
I feel that that pound should be for an emergency situation, for stray dogs, or, you know, one that might bite somebody or trip somebody, because that facility is not set up for a multitude of animals, and I mean, it's just not.
We could possibly put together a list of some shelters, maybe when you give us calls, then you can give them some other contact information.
My only thing is, um, I know HFLCS, things are not going well between the pounds and the- We, I was wondering if it is a possibility, maybe we could get a washer and dryer in there, because we don't go into the trailer anymore, and I guess they don't come onto the, the pound property anymore either.
Do, um, what? I'm sorry.
Okay, the trailer that sits out there is the office. Supposedly, that's not owned by the city. It's owned by HFLCS. The washer and dryer that we used for bedding, for towels, for blankets for the animals in cold weather, we had no way of washing and drying them. I might be going to the laundry man to do it, because I'm not putting them in my washer and dryer. It's a big mess. We need to sit down. I guess we'll discuss it on the twenty-eighth, but I have a long list.
Okay. Is it, is it our washer and dryer, or is it HFLCS's washer and dryer?
I guess it's HFLCS's washer and dryer.
We have to get a new washer and dryer, because David Wingo has some out there.
And then if we could set it up in one of the other buildings, maybe?
Okay, well, sounds like we might, or if it's a, if it's a right take on the washer and dryer.
Okay.
Is that right? So...
How come that trailer's back there from the sewers?
I, this is news to me. I have no idea.
We're primarily new to this situation, so I don't know either, what to do.
Because I used to go in and do laundry.
We will find a solution. We are not the property.
We appreciate you, but thank you.
Thank you, yes, very much. I really appreciate it.
I've, I've got a quick question on way back in your water, Debbie.
Yeah.
When you do water adjustments, I mean, I'm assuming you adjust one month, not three months, or you're fit?
Right, I think two months max a year.
Okay, two months.
A year.
A year. You just back a year?
No, two months.
Two months, or two months thirty.
Two times you can.
Oh, two times for a year. Okay, I keep wanting.
I would assume that some of that will be changed in the future. It may be just once. I may not win all of them, and I'm sure I can try to win half of them.
Well, if you used the H1, if Wayne had a water leak around, for a year, and it got fixed, we'd talk to him.
I have a massive water leak. Tell my friend I'm a sprain person.
We can't afford to...
What they do, they judge it, each one of them individually, but none of them are automatically gonna be adjustable.
Well, you have had one person's opinion that has not been brought to the council for action. That's the action, so we'll see what happens in the future.
Can, real quick, I'm sorry, this'll be it. Ed, is there, I hate to kind of ask you on the spot, but... Are you, are you guys wanting to take the trailer?
Who's you guys?
I'm sorry, is HFLCS, would they like?
I resigned. I, I pulled, I pulled the mayor, oh, nine, two weeks ago.
I apologize. I did not know that.
Well, I think that's a situation that maybe we can address on the twenty-eighth, because if the locks are changed and we're not allowed in, and they're not allowed there, then what's the point?
Anything that sits on city property, forewarned, it will not be locked whereby a city personnel to not get in. Does she hear me? I don't care whose it is. If it's on our property, it had better not be locked up whereby city personnel, police department, fire department cannot have access to that property. If it is, it will be removed. That is a promise.
I have to say, I was at the pound, said, well, I was at the recycling center, and I ran into Kim, and she gave me a tour of the pound, and I just, I really do thank you. I know it's been a difficult situation and not really knowing how to handle it, and I think you've done really well, and we appreciate you.
And I do wish everybody would come down there and, and see. I really do.
There's some cute cats that have been left there.
There's open doors, and that's another situation, that I'm not doing this to cause problems, HFLCS. I'm not, there's a lot of vindictiveness, and this person said this, and this person did that. We're all blown up. We need to make this pound work. We have animals in there that I don't even know if the city is really responsible for HFLCS's, because they've been signed over to them. You're writing my job, and I'm caring for animals that do not belong to the city. I'm a very fair person. I mean, I wouldn't say that if I wasn't, because I could be out of a job for saying that.
Between now and the twenty-eighth of October, between two council people, we should have adequate answers.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We can't, we don't understand. We're not asked.
Yeah.
If the people don't ask, we don't know always what the problem is. But we immediately cannot solve all problems in this time.
Okay.
The impossible takes a little bit longer with the city of Buffalo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a motion to go into a closed session.
Second.
Would you please come over?
Brandon?
Hi.
Wayne?
Hi.
James?
Hi.
Christie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Jess?
This council, for a full...